Maybe all of a good. It's riveting.
We're against everybody.
But I mean, if it's my other.
Oh, once anybody else. Michelle's gone.
No, I didn't mean I was not here.
You know, it's like, oh, shit.
And now.
And shields. That's their first draw.
Go top. And central plays. Um, something like the legacy. That also.
Yeah.
Two hundred years from now to Seattle. The same time.
If you don't have. This person. Make sure he means this.
Good morning.
It is. We got a share.
That's the place to see your.
Ah, look at it. This is leading to every day.
Right, I get it when I'm fifteen two days outside.
From a verlet mask.
Yeah, that's.
And it's true.
Of course. I'm. Let's go on.
But yeah, that's quite good. The February twenty twenty is the session of Grand Forks County Commission will come to order. The all commissioners are present, Commissioner Hagan is by telephone or by zoom rather. So we will then start with pledge of belief.
But let's wait, we just. I may have identified. As you can read all over for which is Sam. What nation under God in the physical delivery of change has.
So the first item is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. So. Is that getting interrupted or commissioner Roth and Mr. Rust is seconded. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes? Take me by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Pass. The next item is the order of agenda. Does any commissioner or have any items they would like to add to the agenda?
I'll move approval of the agenda.
So.
Rusted second by coming for peach. All in favor of the. Uh, the order of agenda. Taken by by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. That. The next item is the consent agenda, which includes bills, employee status changes. Overtime, January financial report. And a game of chance permit. Uh, for North Dakota Shooting Sports Association. Any commissioner want anything told or discussed prior to voting on this issue? There are none, all in favor. Do I do another motion? Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Pete.
I'll say.
Second, Commissioner Rust. All in favor, taking five by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Pass. Now we are at the emergency management. Uh. Appointments.
Mister Chairman, there are three positions that are open in that board. Um, the three that are currently serving apply and no one else applied. Uh, it has not been able to go to their board for a recommendation, although they are content with three people that are currently serving. So I would need a motion to appoint. Um. The three Lee, Gustafson, Estha. Heather, Iverson, and Michelle were cozy.
Any discussion prior to the motion? I'm. I have a motion. And Mr. Rust.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All in favor of these three individuals being appointed, reappointed to the board of emergency management, taking five by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass.
Thank you, and there are two positions on the planning and zoning board that are open.
Yeah.
And they, um, Mister Magnusson talked about. Reducing the size of the board, but he is going to bring that back. I haven't seen him yet, but.
So we.
But we do have two openings on that board.
Could we be filling those until? Should.
We tried.
We tell this.
We tried to fill it.
Ah.
And we couldn't fill it, no one applied. So.
Ah.
And the people that are currently serving did not want to do it anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have to just wait for him to get.
I think you do without one.
Right.
Good.
And the next one, Mister Chairman and members of the commission is the car care systems. Um, at the last meeting, I brought this contract or agreement to the board for approval because we we hadn't had one in the past. And the sheriff stepped up and said, we would like to take over your machine. And the board requested that I notify car care systems and and let them know. Uh, they also take care of the one at the correctional center, and I guess they intend to keep that one even if we they didn't have the one here at the county office building. But they are here, um. They have any questions? Um. About. Before you make a decision on which way to go.
You're going to. Are you two down?
Yeah.
Say your name for the record.
Good afternoon, I'm Brian Jones, I'm the president of Car Care Systems of Farborough, North Dakota. We have been doing the ATM here at this building for. Thousand years. I'm not quite certain. Um. And we've been very grateful for the business. Uh, we started out, uh, it was very slow, uh, in an average of. Five or six a month, and over the years, we've gotten it to a level of sixty four transactions a month. And we are a company that's certainly willing to work with you. If there's a specific reason why you want us out in the sheriff's department in, I don't know what the reasoning is. Uh, but we're willing to pay more income if that's what's required, we're willing to. Uh, work with the new people on processing the existing machine that's here and let them fill it with their money. If they want to make more income, so we have all kinds of. Uh, options that we're willing to discuss and talk about. Uh, other than just getting replaced. Uh, so. I don't know with that, what else I can, I can say. Uh, unless it's a negotiation or it's just going to be a flat out decision. Uh, I don't know, I don't know how it works, that's it. Um. The ma- the machine makes approximately two hundred and fifty six dollars a month. Uh, right now. You are receiving seventy five cents a transaction, which fits into our. Uh, grid of payment. Uh, what it costs us for money and security and delivery and those types of things. We are willing to make a donation to the county or the sheriff's department if they want more money. We we'd be willing to go up to fifty percent. Of the two hundred and fifty six dollars, simply because this is what we do, we've done it full time for twenty six years. And we do it very, very well. And again, we are grateful for your business and the opportunity, so. What else do I do?
And look, I'd like to call on the former sheriff Ross, who is a commissioner at all. I think he probably knows more about the deputies association and what they're going to do than the rest of us.
Yeah, in fact, there's some deputy sitting back there too, but.
Guys.
Uh. The deputy association, they do a lot of uh, work with the youth. In the community, they give a lot of money back. To the kids, they do uh, uh, shop with a deputy every year. Uh, they they. Get things for the different schools, uh, uh, materials and stuff for uh, training on. Um. Uh, oh, just. Probably anything, say no to drugs or or whatever. But you know, all this stuff costs money, and uh, so they're solely into this thing to give money back. To the community, to the kids, because that's what the sheriff's department's been all about when I was there, and it still is today, so.
Fantastic. Is there a we we can participate or or not?
Well, you know.
We've offered fifty percent of the uh, of the of the gross revenue. Uh, orbit, which would be about hundred and twenty five dollars a month. Uh, which we're willing to donate back, um.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I don't know how. They have one over at the PD building right now, they've got a. ATM over there, and I don't know how much money they make from that, but the money that they do get goes right back into the community. Uh, either one of you guys want to talk about that, or are you you guys with the association?
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for.
I'm Nate, I'm Brian. Blake, nice to meet you. Please meet you. Uh, Blake Buckler, over the sheriff's office, um, and uh, vice president of our association. So, yeah, the main thing we do, we just kind of started doing the ATM within the last year over at the police department sheriff's office. Um, mostly it gets used to when people do fingerprints in our office, they have to pay to get fingerprints, so they use it for that. And the money we get from that goes back into our association. And right now, it's put into our general fund, and then from there, we transfer it to where we need it, um, one of our biggest funds that we. Obviously take out every year is we call our kids in a community fund. Um, with that, we do our shop the deputy event. Like we used to pay off lunch balances at schools for the when kids can pay their lunch balances, building cables off. If schools need something, contact us, every year we usually give mostly like jackets, backpacks, hats, gloves. Um, to all the schools in our county, city, we let them take care of it, so it's all schools in the county that contact us. And then, of course, we donate to other things as it it presented to us mostly. Um, right now, in the last probably five years, our association, it was, we didn't have very much money. And probably the last five years, we started building up more and more and more fundraisers, so we are continuing to try to get bigger, just so we can continue to give more. Give me questions for me right now?
My one question that I have is that, do you do that during? Your work hours or after work?
So right now, I'm not working, I'm I'm off duty, um, so. Mostly, it's volunteer organizing.
No, no, what I'm saying is when you fill the the ATM, is it off duty or on duty?
It just depends on the situation and who fills it, um. I not only work it, I don't fill it, um, usually another guy at our office fills it, um, it kind of depends, and we work with the sheriff on that.
Was there? A prohibition of doing a.
Well, I'm just saying that if, let's say, deputy times from filling the ATM, if you had someone else filling the ATM. I don't know if it would be a wash. But.
Well, I'm sure.
Well, I I bring up a point here now, I mean, even if they're doing it on their work time, you know. To me, to have a a an armed sheriff. Putting money into an ATM machine makes more sense than uh, like a secretary at the office or whatever doing it, that doesn't make any sense. And that's a com- a good opportunity to get. Somebody robbed. So. I I don't think it makes any difference whether they're working or not, most of most of them very off duty anyway, so. Um. I think it just makes sense.
Um, what is your? Monthly proceeds that you get from the ATM at the police?
Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head, like I said, I I don't, of course, you know, run the ATM, um, our president, who was here la- last couple weeks ago, um, Debbie Richter. She does all that, she's unfortunately out of town right now on vacation, so I'm just filling in. We could get those numbers, um. It's not crazy, I know at one point when I looked, I think we were at about seven month period, but after we got the ATM. About seven months, we were at about, I think, eight hundred dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think we're closer to about nine hundred right now, since we put it in, which is probably what eight months ago.
Something like that, roughly.
Um. I. I'm this treasurer of the association. And I've been for the last year, so. I just got on our bank account stuff now, so I actually know what. What money we have coming and going in and out of there, but I think. Honestly. For us to do both. Facilities would be extremely tough, because obviously the jail, there's a lot of money. Probably coming out of the ATM versus the one at the county office building. And for us to maintain that, I think would be a struggle. Right away out of the gate, because. For our association to refund the ATM machine there. Which I don't know, I don't know what transactions come out of the jail, but I'm assuming it's probably five to ten thousand dollars a month easy. Out of jail, I don't know, just up bond money for schedules for people running bond out of jail. I think it would be difficult for us to fund that right away out of the gate. Um. I think we've done a decent job being able to fund the one at the police department right now, we have never had any issues of any money being short. Out of our funds to cover any of the money going in machine. Um, I guess, on our side, I think as the treasurer. And for our association, so we don't short. Our funds for the kids would be probably. Look at doing the county office building right away, just get our feet on our ground, because I think that's very much more manageable for us right now. At this time, versus trying to take over both ATMs at once. Is my, for our financial. Report. Mr. Rust.
Yeah, sir, um. For all the uh, standing, where do you guys do in the community, what other revenue sources do you guys have, other than fundraisers and ATMs?
I I can answer that one, um.
More better.
So the.
I don't know.
So our main, our main source of income is our annual annual golf tournament, I think we're going to be on our fourth year. And that comes purely from donations, we get, um, you know, whole sponsorships, and then obviously people that come in and go through that. That's our main source of revenue, um, beyond that, we usually do one uh, raffle every year, like just a a gun raffle or something. To help fund more for the kids, but ninety percent of it, actually probably ninety five percent is, you know, from our golf tournament or sponsorships we get from around the county. Local businesses and stuff, we used to get, um, local businesses would fund us every year to do our shop the deputy. As we've gotten bigger, um, more businesses now just sponsor our golf tournament, and then we get a donation from citizens community credit union still to this day, they when they started with us for the shop the deputy event. So that's all we have right now.
And, um, this for the future, um. But don't forget my name and number when you're doing a golf tournament or a gun raffle.
Absolutely.
So.
Other question?
Um, so, right now, um. There's an opportunity to get fourteen hundred dollars a year. From the vendors who do the ATM. With no work involved. You know, that's one thing to consider, um. Doing the ATM at the police department would be convenient because you're there. And it would be an additional trip over here, would would you ever consider the fourteen hundred dollars a month? Or fourteen hundred dollars a year, excuse me, um, with no work involved?
First off, thank you very much for that, I mean, that was that was very generous, um, and yes, we probably would consider it, I we need to bring that to our association, obviously, and have a vote, um, just as you guys do here. Um, and I'd like to chance present that to them, if that'd be okay with us.
Yeah.
That's what I'd like to propose, to see if if the group would be willing to do that, there need to be some contract or something. Um, to ensure that that would continue to happen. Going those funds going to the police or sheriff's department, but saying that it has to be a community resource for kids projects.
And just for everybody's knowledge, we are a non nonprofit, um, so we are a nonprofit, and the. Money would go into our kids in the community fund, we call it, so like for that fund, we have, you know, our general funds, stuff, not doing everything, but our general fund, we can use for more broad items, the kids in the community fund, we use. What like it says, for kids in the community, schools and stuff like that, so.
When would you be able to make that presentation to your group?
As soon as we can get an email, I'm getting a meeting together, so probably within a. A week or two.
Well, would you folks be willing to entertain? This issue at the next meeting, after they've presented a proposal to you?
Certainly, that would be less time to put together, um, the numbers on paper for you. So you can make a good business decision. If if I may ask, at first, do I need to come up? Um, there is also the cost of an ATM, which is twenty five hundred dollars. Roughly to buy an ATM.
Yep.
Um, so that's why we just, I I we're very grateful that you're offering this opportunity to Niggo for you. And see, and save you some money. Uh, because that's what we do. And then maybe we can discuss some other things too, so, yeah, but the next meeting will be fine with us.
Okay, we'll put it on the on the agenda for next meeting, and we'll, with your from. From you, and we will, uh. Let you know, give it, if you'll give us your contact information, we'll let you know. What we're gonna.
Debbie's already getting it, I guess.
All right.
May may be precious.
Thank you.
Well, thank you to everybody for coming in.
It's nice. I'm good, dude.
All right, um. IP director. Right, you were talking about earlier today?
Yes, I came at thinking I was asking you to sign it. Uh, but then we pointed out, it has my name on it, so I need to ask permission, sign it myself.
Oh, I.
Uh, it is a cybersecurity grant. For three hundred eighty six thousand dollars. Uh, state has kicked in, um. Almost. Seventeen thousand five thirty six three, so it leaves our match at fifty nine thousand six hundred thirty seven, uh. Which I did request capital improvements today, uh, over the next three years, this will be mainly used, well, will be all used. To replace our equipment, all of our faucets and the server room, uh, all the switches and all of our buildings. We can only use it for replacement, can't use it for new. Uh, we have a lot of restrictions on it, but it's still. Again, I'm done.
I'll move you allow the signature.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second, I think you got the vote. Uh, any further discussion?
I just want to say well done on getting that draft.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, take it by me saying aye.
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 Both. Yeah. Thank you so much.
I'm sure.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay. You none of us both. All right. Good idea. Uh, okay. Let's move on to, uh, Mr. West.
That many members of the board, you have things for consideration. Uh, first on the list, um, our old shed. Uh, so that's the old shed in the county we do lease. The. Lease is up here at the end of March. Current lease was a three year term. The landlord has. Um, asked for. An increase in rent. Make it increase it by seventy five dollars a month from thirty three hundred a year to forty two hundred a year. And also. Did offer to extend the lease up to five year term. Um. I guess the building, this little vacuum building is in a great location for that relative and it's working well. Uh, my recommendation is to accept the increase in price. And then consider how to the five year terms. The current. Contract in the packet says five years, if the board would refer three year for us, certainly acceptable too, and we can modify that before signature, if it's approved, but.
Mr. Rust.
A quick question, Nick, does the price elevate each year, that five year term, or is it fixed for five years? Next. That's an ask, yeah. Yeah, it's a good deal. Yeah.
Any further questions?
No, I would make a motion that no, we approve the own shed lease of four thousand two hundred dollars. And uh, that lease could go for the next five years.
I get.
The second by Commissioner Hagan, yeah.
We got you.
I don't think you're on the. All right, uh, that's some of your roll call vote, uh, all in favor of the motion, taking by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Asking out.
Thank you.
All right, next one.
Next item is, uh, procurement of some snowball trucks, so with your numbers a month ago, we had bits. And, uh, we only received one bid and wasn't available until. Uh, the second quarter of, uh, twenty twenty five. And so, with the goal of procuring two trucks ultimately in two years, we. Uh, rejected all those bids. And the rebid for two. And we still only received, well, one bid from one company, RVO Truck. However, this time they did provide. Uh, the same. RVO Truck Center. Did a Mac, like it did the first time, but also threw in a little option. Um, now we, I was expecting a bid from. Warrior Trucks, they made Western Star Truck. And we got it a day late. It was mailed the day before this review, it was supposed to be overnighted, but didn't make it here in time, so. Um, can't consider that. Unfortunately, um. So, hey, we're we're back to square one with, um, Mac is the little bit as before, just with two trucks this time. And they would both be available in that, uh, April of twenty twenty five is their anticipated delivery date. And that would be my recommendation, is to, um, try and procure both trucks with. Save the money from this year, add in money in twenty twenty five. And. Pay for two trucks in the twenty twenty five, it's my requested motion.
I would move the approval of that, it's too shame.
Twenty second.
Second.
Discussion. Can I ask one question, Mr. Shepherd? Um, you, uh, and all that, they couldn't be accepted because it came in a day late or whatever, you know what the number was? Are you not allowed to say?
Um.
Or is it? Or is the fact that you're, uh, suggesting that we make a motion the answer to my question?
Well, regardless of the price, we're not.
I want to put you in the spot, so, that's just a business guy and me coming up. It's really something we can't.
Consider. They're a little day late, right? So.
All right, I retract my previous stance, all right. I'd like to know if you wish.
All right, uh, any further questions or discussion? I have one quick question, I think you budgeted for one each year, so this this doesn't change any of the budgeting plan that you have placed as a.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I can. Right, uh, we have most on the second on the floor, all in, assuming you roll call vote, all in chamber of the motion to buy these two trucks. Um, prepared, is there a sheriff's signature? Or not?
Well.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think so, I think it's a matter of, um. Well, there would be, we would sign a purchase order.
Yeah.
That would come out, in fact, I don't have that paperwork yet, but I guess historically, like, maybe we couldn't if the board accepts the bid. I would sign that.
Yeah.
With acceptance, assuming everything's saying.
All right. So, uh. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Own. Ask.
Thank you. Uh, last. Last item for consideration is the dress code policy. Um. Now, this would be an amendment to the uh, standard county policy, and what 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 we're proposing here, and I've been working with HR for quite a while on this. Is, um, well, we've had, we've been discussing it for years, but finally, really working on it the last few months, but. One is. Well, generally speaking, we're operating under the county wide dress code policy, which essentially says, what you where should you appropriate for what you do. Well, our department's a little different, where your fire. Is, um, you know, protective in what you can do, um. And we wanted to take it a step further. Also, so it, this would kind of put in right, well, this would put in writing things that we've been doing for a number of years. And also the one major change would add in a boot of office. Reimbursement policy, that's the biggest change, and that's what sparked you bringing it to the board. Um, and then going through that, we decided, well, it's. I think we have a high biz policy, if you're along the road, you got to wear a high biz vest, right, we have that policy as a departmental policy, but it's now it's just part of the overall policy. So just for the board's awareness, so things like, um. We we would provide gloves. Various types of gloves, depending what they're doing, or. Eye protection, or uh, or hearing protection, or if you need a hard hat, we would provide that, or all the way down sunscreen. Um, ski repellent. Um. We have uniforms or coveralls, if you guys are working something, you need, you need money for your, or they need that protection, if they're welding, we got the. Face shields and leather chaps and leather colist to keep you protected, we just provide that, and have been doing that for many years. Uh. That's part in this policy as well, too. Um. Part of the reason for the boot reimbursement addition is, one, to try and reduce. Um, claims due to slip strips and falls. Um. I hear rumors after the fact, we we had a lot of those claims, in my opinion, it's a lot. And I hear rumors after the fact that maybe they weren't wearing. Good attire at the time. Um. Another thing is to try and catch up the overall compensation package of the department. Where most of our other competitors offer food or clothing on moments. Um, we did not include clothing because. Um, we did not include clothing because we had, we do offer those common provided uniforms or coveralls, so we don't feel we need a clothing allowance. Um, and just the demands of the job, you know, it's essentially an instruction job. High, you know, they're on their feet all day a lot of times and, and going through. Quite a bit, which we want them to have a good protection boot. With the reimbursement, um, we do have requirements in there that it has to have a total protection. Traditionally, it's been steel told, there's new technologies out there where they're aluminum or composite, or there's a lot of different options nowadays, but it has that full protection. And that they're slippery system, so they have grip underneath, not just a smooth sole. Um, and that's very good quality, primarily lead and boot. Um, the maximum reimbursement that would be allowable, depending on the position, is up to two hundred fifty dollars a year, it's what we're proposing. So that would get you either, like, one good boot a year. Or maybe one and a half or two average boots, depending on what you wanted to do, so. You want a winter boot, summer boot, or say a buck boot with toe protection on, just sometimes appropriate for what they're doing. Those would be eligible items, um. The, uh, budget, so we would, I would estimate the maximum expenditure just under seven thousand dollars, although this wasn't. Specifically budgeted for this year. Um, we would plan for it in the future, now. We did just cancel the, the third new shed, it was still in the budget, that was, we replaced it with a bidding share. Um, so, yes, for this year, we would have money in our miscellaneous budget because of that, that was total coincidence. And, uh, we just actually realized that last week. But, um, so budget-wise, that would be okay this year, and in the future, we would just plan for it accordingly. Um, when I say up to two hundred fifty dollars, it depends on the position, so. At HR's recommendation, they've divided our department into three different work groups. So you have all the mechanics and operators all in one work group, which is twenty-two out of twenty-eight people. And then there's, um, our superintendent and our office tech are kind of in the middle, and then. Jan and I in the office are in a third category, um. Or, because obviously I'm not gonna need boots like the operator with, so. Um, but.
This is industry standard, this is a complete no-brainer. I mean, any company you go apply with, they're gonna have a.
Alpen safety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, uh, so, I don't know if there's even more discretion needed, absolutely common sense.
Uh, any more motion?
I hope so, I'll move through, answer glass, second.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Pete. Some of your roll call votes, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. Ask unanimously.
Thank you very much. That is all I have, any questions?
I would comment too, maybe stop some of those little like splits up on top and you can put up down the bottom, those worked really good for my guys and Jason, yeah. Okay, so you don't bar up the floor, you go outside, so you can lift them up. Okay, because we had the last, I'll stick, I learned the media, we get ice here.
Yes, where did you get those at?
Uh, we got them from Granger.
Oh.
So we're still good for April on that South Road, just outside of the champ?
Oh, sure.
Yes, do you need to contact anybody?
Yeah.
They talked about it today, I think.
Could we also, wanna do it now?
In April.
They want to do in April. We can do it just one at a time.
Is that right?
April's correct, yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
And then when, when you get ready to do it, I was gonna put you in touch with Caleb, the, the onsite manager. So you have to work that out, but April, they're, they're ready anytime for you.
I haven't talked to the contractor.
Yeah.
I was planning using power, but, um, okay. I don't know if their pilots are.
He might, he might wanna talk to him, tell him what's coming up, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, administrator.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, so first is an update on the, on the parking ramp, that the board had asked me to keep negotiating with, with Mr. Phelan, City Administrator Phelan. Uh, so I'll give you a summary of that, um. Regarding a cost share of the necessary repairs, we would be expected to pay one hundred percent. Of the, the identified repair by eighty-two S. Uh, city's position is, uh, the repairs accumulated under, under the county's ownership, and we have the fund, we have the ARPA funding available to address those issues, and I. I believe the board addressed that at the last week anyways, so there would be, we would be expected to put a hundred percent of that, uh, that two-year cost. For improvements, um, city will still willing to provide the county two hundred parking spaces for our business needs. Um, maybe for county use, we, we would have to pay the city for those reserved spaces, um. And there's different scenarios, and, and for the board, I, I've tried my best to. Predict the different scenarios and different needs, different revenue, different expenses. So just a couple of options for the board, just to help the board in discussion, and when you're, you're thinking about a decision. Um, utilizing two hundred spaces from the city, uh, that, that would essentially leave the county with fifty-three spaces. Uh, for potential growth, uh, jury use, clientele use, business use, et cetera. Um, this would also keep two, thirty-one, two-hour parking spaces under our control for county business. Um, with all of that, we'd be looking at, uh, eighty thousand six hundred dollars annually to the, to the city of Grand Forest. Um, for, for those spaces, now, I, I did visit with Mr. Phelan and, uh, Andy Ederson, their deputy planner, um. We could, uh, the two-hour spots could, could go to the city to manage, and that would considerably bring our costs down. The only, uh, catch is that those two-hour spaces wouldn't necessarily be for county clientele use only. If they remain under our purview, they can be for client use only. Uh, if we gave the two-hour parking spots to the city for management, that would reduce our annual, uh, uh. Payment, if you will, to sixty thousand one hundred twenty dollars, that's, that's for the fifty-three reserved spaces. Um, there's another scenario, we could ask for a hundred and eighty spaces from the city to be observed for county use. Uh, and that would leave the county with thirty-three spaces reserved for growth and jury use. Talking with the state's attorney, we'd need at least thirty spaces for jury trial, uh, when jury, jury selection is going on, but not every day of the month. Um, if we went that route with a hundred and eighty spaces. That would bring the county's annual, uh, expenditure to the city down to sixty-seven thousand three hundred eighty dollars, or sixty thousand seven four hundred. If we give the two-hour parking spaces over to the city for their use, it brings our payment. Down to forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, the only logistical issue I see that we could work out, but is the main concern of our, our public serving departments. Is if the city manages the two-hour spots, it would go under what's called passport parking, so if you're familiar with how it works on U and D's campus. You have an app on your smartphone, and, and that's how you pay for parking, and that's. Where a lot of the public facing, public serving departments are very concerned is. Their clientele's don't have, their clients don't have smartphones, how would they be able to utilize that? Um, if we go that route, the city would work with us, but that, that is essentially, we're looking at about fifty thousand a year if we went that route. Um, the city would do parking ramp maintenance, they would perform snow removal, they would perform parking enforcement. Um, if you remember when City Administrator Phelan was here a couple of months ago, they were suggesting nine, ninety dollars a month for our parking rates. Uh, they're willing to be consistent with the city-owned ramps, so it should be, uh, fifty dollars a month, Monday through Friday. Hundred and twenty dollars per twenty-four seven reserve. Um, I talked about the two-hour spots. Uh, just, just for the commi, the commission's FYI, we, we do have parking ramp maintenance budget. And Ms. Nelson, uh, provided those numbers to the, the, to the commission through email, but since twenty twenty. The county has budgeted eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars, which comes from parking permit. Revenue, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Nelson. Um, if the city were to take ownership of the ramp, we would obviously lose the parking permit revenue. And that eighty-one thousand six hundred is, is offset by the parking ramp revenue, so. You know, whether we owe the city fifty thousand a year or eighty thousand a year. Um, that would no longer be revenue offset, so we'd need to find, uh, another place for those payments to, to come from. Um, but the, the big takeaways are, um, the city expects us to pay the full price of the, of the rehabilitation cost. Uh, but they are willing to work with us in some of the other areas. Uh, that said, my, my recommendation to the board, I visited, Ms. Wong said about this last week. If, if the, if the commission would like to continue the, these discussions with the city. Um, there is that North Dakota century code where we can't just. Give the ramp over, we have to go into a public auction, um. And set that date, so my, my recommendation to the board, and it's just a recommendation, if you wanna continue those discussions, I would. Set that public auction date soon as well, just, just to avoid. Optics, and I'll be good at that, but that, that's what I have with the parking ramp, and. Just look for more direction.
Comments?
I, uh. Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, I get frustrated with the city. I think, uh, you know, we're gonna have all the cost to fix this ramp up. And we're gonna be kind of limited as to what we can do, uh, within that ramp, um. I just, I just have a hard time, uh. Uh, thinking about entering into an agreement, I, my personal opinion is, we should just keep the ramp ourselves. We can do what we want with it, um, I think we can handle it, um. And I, I, I just look at, at all these issues, and there's gonna be so many things coming up with needing more space, and we might not have it. And, uh, I just, I have a real problem with it, so.
Mr. Ross, do you got a comment?
Not many, just one thing to keep in mind, so, you know, any negotiations, everyone's got their starting point. And what they'd be willing to do. So, because they say we have to bet some full three million. And therefore, I think, Doc Phelan wants nothing to do with this parking ramp, so he's not gonna push for. Anything palatable right off the bat, you know, we would have to come back with a counter. And, uh, like, maybe that wouldn't be valid with either, but, um, I don't know. I just, I, I'm, I'm so concerned about our facilities' costs that have, that accumulated. And that are gonna continue to, that, uh, I think I've mentioned a snow fear that, I don't know, a thousand times, which makes me nervous, I do see maybe an out on this one, but I think. Uh, if, you know, the votes aren't there, then I guess we'll just have to work for a long-term maintenance plan for, for ramp to keep control of it. And I, I, I don't think, I don't know, uh, affordably, we can offer the spots to wanna. Continue on a proper maintenance plan to not saddle a future dimension with the same problem. So, I mean, I was anticipating that. And all, and I've mentioned this in all, in all conversations on that, I would anticipate that. Those free spots on top would actually be pretty much limited to jurors. You know, maybe give a party pass or whatever, and then, uh, the rest of it is all gonna have to come way up, so that we've got the funds to. Maintain this facility long-term, not, you know, just. For, not just through this initial three million dollars spent, but for the next twenty, thirty, forty years and so forth.
Mr. Pete?
I don't know.
Debbie, has, what, what the staff pay for a, a five-day-a-week. Parking permit to have a spot in the parking lot, has that, uh, price changed?
One time it changed, I think.
In the last twenty years?
In the last twenty years.
Yeah, so it's been quite a while.
Yeah.
You know, with costs going up, I think we could expect that we would have to increase the cost, um, of. Parking permits, and do we have a separate rate for the twenty-four seven? We don't, and that may be something to think about, too, to have a rate for the five-day-a-week. Staff that come here and maybe have one for the twenty-four sevens.
Are the twenty-four sevens hours, no? Our, our, those are fleet, all good.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Russ said, the majority of twenty-four sevens are fleet. Um, we made that change pre-COVID, a lot of them were twenty-four seven. There was a downtown parking plan that the county participated in, and, and at kind of the request of. The downtown businesses in the city, we had, we took a lot of our twenty-four sevens and made them Monday through Friday. So that folks coming downtown to do business, Art, uh, Art on the Red, Art and Wine Lock. Blues on the Red, could, they, they could, they could feel like they could park these ramps, as many with uptown talent, they'd see twenty-four seven, they think they couldn't. Um, Monday through Friday, twenty-four seven, it's the same rate, um, um. To, to Commissioner Russ's point, I, I, I haven't been shy, um. Among some of the, the, the staffing departments, I think if the commission does along the ramp, you need to adjust the rates. Uh, I would even recommend, um, being consistent with what the city's at, just because. Uh, I think if you look at eighty-two S's eighteen-year maintenance plan, which doesn't have to be followed to the T. We have a, a, a pretty good facilities manager, you're looking at a hundred and seventy thousand annually, um, so the. If the county keeps subsidizing that gap, or we try to adjust for it to, to address those up, upcoming maintenance. Needs, I think you wanna keep twenty-four seven for fleet, and if the sheriff winds up in here, they'll need some space as well. Northeast Human Services, we have downtown residents that use our ramp twenty-four seven, um. From a staff standpoint. I don't know if I'd recommend charging a hundred and twenty dollars a month to Northeast Human Services or any of our tenants for twenty-four seven. Um, that's a commission decision, of course, a lot of our residents who rent spaces in our ramp are college age or elderly. So I'd be mindful of that when looking at twenty-four seven rates. I think, I think you also have to look at the top deck, right now, it's, it is free. Um, that's been, that's come up with some staff and department heads as well. If you're utilizing level one and two, you're paying to use the ramp, you're using the top low, you're not paying anything, so more of the. Um, burden of the repairs just falls on the payees, there's enough those at the top, and maybe that's a less of charge. Just things to consider, depending which way the commission goes.
Mr. Ross?
Uh, I don't like the idea of having to, uh. Put it out to bid, you know, so to speak, we can just. Uh, turn it over to the city, um. I guess where I'm at right now is, I would like to, uh, see if the county can retain the, the ramp. We have the control, we can do what we need to do to satisfy the employees. And the constituents that use that facility, and. So, I guess at this point, I would like to make a motion that the county retains. Uh, the, the county parking ramp, and, uh, not to enter into any more negotiation if the city make it over.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, uh, the motion, and the second, uh, Commissioner Hagan, we haven't called on you yet for your views, you, did you let me say anything?
I didn't have anything additional that would be of service to anybody, I, I. I'm kind of in the middle of this space where the more that we talk with the city, the less like. The less likely I feel like we should be giving up our parking spaces for the people, I feel like, you know, we were, in the beginning. Maybe we were able to scavenge out with some of our, our, ARPA money and be able to use that somewhere else, but. If we're gonna be paying for all the fixing up, and then we're gonna be losing spaces, plus we're still gonna be owing money every year, it's just. I don't know, it just doesn't sit very well with me, but, again, it's negotiation, so I don't know if they would have a legal room, but. Anyway, that's where I'm at.
Any further discussion? Everyone, uh, spoken on, uh, also in my view, seven, I, I am concerned about. The fact that we have such a different clientele than the downtown ramps do, and I think we owe. Those people who come in here. Playing with, playing without smartphones to be in the elevator that they're coming in or out, plus, I think we have. For us to pay the entire repairs. For us to pay the entire repairs and then turn it over to the city, even if the public auction thing doesn't seem like a complete roadblock. It's just a difficult situation to be in. I think we, once the repairs are done for the, for the present, I believe we will be able to. With the income from the ramp and our ordinary budget process, I believe we'll be able to keep it going. Uh, so. I guess. I come around to the idea that, that this is not the, without better, much better guarantees than we have, such as. Not having to pay all the repairs upfront with ARPA funds. That, that kind of on that, that idea that should keep it as well, so. Any other discussions? Arguments, one, one, anyone wants to make?
No, that, I agree with you, Dave, that's the one other issue that I have is. Our ability to serve the people that we are here to serve, and a lot of them don't have. The couple bucks that it might take to come in and use the services from Lou or whoever, it's just. That's the one thing where I get kind of nervous, that we might not be able to help those people, and. The city might have a different clientele, so.
Well, if there's no further discussion, um, let's, we'll do this by roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
You went to Ross then?
Only I know because I still feel like this is a deal to be made.
Mr. Peach?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. So, we will cease those nego- negotiations, Mr. Ford, when you. Against the feeling and. And, yeah, yes, I, I think they acknowledged that they didn't want to, uh, riff if we were sitting in the county, and I'm. We're not trying to do that either, so.
Yes, no, I'll, I'll visit Mr. Feeland, and I know, visiting with, with him. These discussions really were to, to try to help the county out of a bind, you know, so it was, it was, it was coming from a, a, a spirit of teamwork there.
That's true.
Um, the next thing I have, I, I, I apologize to the commission in advance. Um, and a proposal from A E two S Engineering and Project Management Agreement. I was hoping to have it to you so you could be in your packets over the weekend, I didn't get it till Monday. Um, and I don't think Ms. Wong says reviewed it yet, but it's on your desks. Um, so this would be an engineering and project management agreement between the county and Grand Forks and A E two S, this would be on the parking ground. Um, it sets a budget of three million coming from ARPA funds. Uh, the, the cost to A E two S to be our engineer, uh, and oversee would be three hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. Scope would be man- uh, manage the project to include R F P um, management and negotiation. And coordination, uh, bid tabulations, coordination, tracking, making a recommendation to the commission. Uh, project oversight and project completion certification. Um, so my, my, my request to the board would be. Approve the agreement with chair signature, uh, contingent on states attorney, uh, states attorneys review.
All right, questions for Mr. Ford?
No, no question, but I made the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Ross. Second by Mr. Peach. And uh, showing a whole roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Both.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the last thing is an update, there's no commission action, but. This is an exciting update, periodically or sporadically, I've been updating the commission about um. Some ongoing stuff, discussions with the Northern Plains U S test site and the Office of Undersecretary Defense. Um, we've been working and discussing with them for over twelve months. Uh, the county's supporting the, uh, U S programs related to research, uh, development, training, and evaluation. Uh, and their approaches to that. Uh, not recently, Washington Headquarters Services um. Published a request for information determining that the best. Place. To perform uh, these concept approaches would be in, in Grand Forks County, at Grand Forks Air Force Base, so. Naturally, we responded to that R F I. Uh, the county has been invited to submit a final proposal, which uh, we're working on. And so, uh, lot, lot, lot of discussions and a lot of, uh, hard work by a lot of people on this, so. We'll have a, Ms. Wong said, and I will have a contract uh, to bring to the commission soon. Um, it would be set up a lot like the Grand Sky S D L, pretty much, just about identical. Um, we, we think it makes sense because we already have contracts with U O D and the U S Air Force. And similar management contracts, so. Um, I think it's a perfect fit, so more to come, but. It's finally uh, shaken loose, going in the right direction, we'll have, have a contract for your review, hopefully, soon. And that's all I have.
Any questions about that topic? All right. Uh, committee report. The thickest part of our back, I knew.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, the first item under uh, State's Attorney Report is regarding the national prescription. Opiod litigation lawsuit that we're involved in, um, essentially, there's a. The question for the board today is whether we would like to. Agree to the proposal's settlement pertaining to Endo International. Um, Endo International is an American Irish corporation that um, develops. Um, manufactures, markets, and distributes pharmaceuticals. And generic drugs, um. Just in layman terms, the, the most commonly known drug they distribute is Percocet. Um, and have for a number of years. Um, they are in the process of filing for bankruptcy in Ira- Ireland. Um, because that's where the legal headquarters are, however, ninety-three percent of their business is end up in the United States. So, um, they have a very real presence in the U S. Um, the settlement proposal. Is that political subdivisions would receive two hundred and seventy-three million dollars. And that amount would be greater if it, um, if the negotiations result in that being spread over a span of eight years. Um. You'll notice in, in the packet, one thing our council. Um, explained for comparison purposes is that the distributor settlements that we have already received. Are nineteen billion dollars, so this amount is substantially less than the amounts we've received from a number of other distributors. Um, so, just for kind of frame of reference of what we might be getting. If you recall from our discussion on other settlement proposals. Um, it's difficult. For our council to nail down a. Specific amount that we'd be receiving, because it's dependent on um. The number of political subdivisions that do sign on to the agreement. And then, um, once they know that number, it also is dependent upon, um. How the state handles those funds as well. Um. In any event, uh, our opioid council is recommending that we do accept this settlement amount. Um, I would agree with their recommendation, and so, um, I'm open to answer any questions, or. If not, I would recommend a, a motion to approve the settlement one.
Uh, any questions? Motion by Mr. Ross then?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peach, any questions of the, the one step? Bearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you. The second item I have is regarding a position reclassification in, um, the State's Attorney's Office. Um, just to give you a little bit of a background, um, I know some of you know Mary Ann Lindgren, she is a longstanding county employee. That's worked here. I don't know, since she was five years old or something. Um, and she is, she's. Earned her retirement very much so, and, and we're very sad to see her leave, she. I wish we could clone her ten times over, she's a fabulous employee. And has served as our restitution coordinator for a number of years. Um, with that said, in the time she has been employed in our office. Um, her role has evolved quite substantially over time. Our office's role in the collection of restitution has evolved. Over time, as well as the case types that are coming through our office. Um, by example, um. One of the primary functions of her job was to monitor and process our bad check cases. Um, if you look at the caseload numbers and that type of caseload, they've substantially gone down because. Not many businesses accept checks anymore, so it's just one example of how her position has changed over time. So, she, her retirement is March thirty-first of this year. Um, we've taken the opportunity to kind of analyze her position and the needs of our office going forward. We've worked with the Human Resources Department to revamp her, um, job description into a new position. That includes all of her duties, but also includes some other duties that, um. We need some additional help in our office. Um, and then once H R um, completed the job description, which is included in the packet. Um, we also worked with Debbie's department to kind of work out how this would look. In our budget, what the budget difference would be. Um, and this is the best news of all, it's actually a cost savings. Um, just primarily because Mary Ann had worked here so long, had a number of years of service under her belt. So we're able to kind of rebound the, the position with some cost savings as well. Um. So, in light of that, I would ask for a motion to approve the job reclassification so that we could move forward with filling the position.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ross, cited by Commissioner Ross, any further questions or discussion? Bearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Pass to.
Thank you.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
A little committee reports. Good, Mr. Ross?
Good. I have nothing to report, and I'm probably saying I really miss my M P O, as I have a conflict I can't get out of, so. I love nothing for that next one. I'll, maybe I'll go to the minutes, see.
What's the peach?
Um, the Human Services Zone met today, uh. There's been quite a few, um, staff. Leaving, and so there are. Two child protection openings or foster care openings and two economic assistance openings. So that will be a great deal of, uh, work for staff applying. Opening up positions and doing the interviews and stuff like that. Um. I don't think. We, we didn't talk about a lot of stuff, both the co-directors were not available, um. So, dealing with illness and family issues, so. Where, we did have some concerns or some questions on the budget, and, um. We talked to the person who works on the budget at, in that zone. And we just need to get more clarification from, uh, at our next meeting. So. That's about it.
Okay, Commissioner Hagan?
I have nothing for us today, thank you.
Right. Please, I've, I've attended the E D C. Formerly meeting with all the advisors, uh. A week or so ago, that was a good meeting with everybody, we had two meetings out at the airbase, was the. Colonel Monroe concerning the airbase and Grand Sky. And then, of course, we had a meeting earlier today. On the, uh, capital improvement projects. And would this be an appropriate time to have a motion to approve the discussions we had?
Yes, there's one error on the, uh, spreadsheet I gave you, I said it was very bursting on. The list for buildings and grounds, it's for the cob, not north, but the self-only. Entrance door, so cross off the pen and it just sells. And adds ten thou- dollars to you.
Count of employee, oh yeah, the demand is correct, it's just.
Yes, I.
Yourself.
Neglected the. Scratch off again.
But, I've got a little bit of time to get that done, and it took a few minutes, but.
I wanted to have to again.
Right, you've, uh, any, uh, discussion on what we talked about earlier, uh, when you see it on writing here?
I think it's noteworthy to, uh. Thank each and every department head for coming in. And prioritizing and moving things back, knowing our budget constraints. I thought it was a very productive meeting, I was very happy with results, and so each and every one, I, I thought that's fantastic.
Yeah, I agree, that's true.
And recognize that there is some grant funding from Evelyn that she was able to get to make, uh. Be some of our I T improvements at a far lesser cost. Because of her grant, so thank you very much.
All right, so. I would take a motion to approve the. Uh, results of a committee meeting earlier today.
I would move approval.
Mr. Peach, Mr. Ross, the second. All in favor of the motion, signify by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? All, the passing now. Well, so, we got, uh. M P O, oh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, member of the commission, uh, Commissioner Ross said, um, on the M P O, as. Are really inspiring, so. We need to, uh, have a motion to.
So moved.
Second.
We do this in a roll call?
Thanks, Mom.
Continue on, uh. But, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both?
Overcome with emotion.
And what's more, the primary residence property.
About that primary residence credit, so please apply if you have it.
The Harold did, too, but.
They did, it's excellent job, yeah, um, reporting that, and he did say fifty percent. Of people, based on his research, had, uh. Filed, I don't know if that is true. Well, it's fifty percent of the timeframe is up and. And fifty percent of the people have applied, and I said, well, I think maybe fifty percent of the people don't know. Yeah, and that's what I'm concerned about.
The real estate agents are sending out stuff to, and so it's offering managers, so.
Very good, March thirty-first is the deadline.
Put it in the, uh, the north, with it, those are greener paper covers, Blairmore now, and some other ones, so. Everybody. We hope the word is getting up, but. They've been done on that one. All right, any other, is the?
Then the last one is just to show you that the North Dakota Reports Information Network, we received, um. A refund, uh. Thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars over twice.
That's great.
Information.
I didn't realize how much work went into that when they said, got that to work out, that's very amazing.
Is that the wrong county?
Yeah, we received it from. Are you thinking it should be higher or lower? No, she's.
I have no idea, it just says Kaff County right there.
Received, received, uh, state account, we got it from them.
They, they bring any money, not like the Ivy Department.
Yeah, sure. I know past five, they spend a lot for new deal.
At the end of the day, Kimberly. Kimberly's dirt.
I couldn't find the unmute button, um, would you please?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, be a bitch, so.
I'm moving in here.